Please raise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the meeting to order. We have the agenda in front of us. Are there additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, item five A and nine A were added after it was first published.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Ashar moves. Is there a second?
Ms. Ted, I'll second.
Ted's second, that's all right. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Public input. Is there anyone from the public who wish to address the board? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Tom moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
David seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carried. Okay, county employee recognition. Mike?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
For county employee recognition today, in the county attorney's department, we have Dan Amon, intern, began the temporary position on May twenty first. In human services, we have Callie Oshlager, family-based service provider, began the full-time position on May twenty seventh. Nicholas Burchild, transit driver, began the part-time position on June second. In the sheriff's department, Christine Cook, office assistant one, is recognized for ten years of service on June first. In solid waste, Kenneth Edwards, certified attendant one, began the full-time position on June second. Skylar Favorite Huckbody, certified attendant, began the full-time position on June second. And Colin Current, certified attendant, is recognized for service from June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, to June tenth, twenty twenty-five. And in veteran services, Nicole Trudeau, administrative support, began the part-time position on May twenty ninth.
All right, well, welcome. Thank you. Okay. Court administration.
Morning. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Chris Sashow, the court administrator for Hubbard. I'm requesting that the compensation rate for court-appointed attorneys be raised from the current seventy-five dollars per hour to a more higher rate to be determined by the board. We have been having difficulties getting attorneys to take child protection cases. Right now, we only have about two that will, you know, take them if they are available, but we've get a, we get a lot of no's due to the current rate. I included the rates of the surrounding counties, and we are the lowest in the area. Belltraming and CAS just recently increased theirs, I don't know if they were at seventy-five, but they did increase theirs to one twenty-five an hour. Even if we would increase to a hundred, to a hundred dollars an hour, it would, over the past years of within the, it would stay within the budget request. On page two, I have, I estimated some yearly totals by figuring out the hours that the attorneys did each year, and then gave you some rates of if we raised it to ninety dollars, a hundred dollars to a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Filings are currently down right now, so we are on the lower end, the last, last year and this year. But it'd be very beneficial to us and the community if we could get a higher rate to get experienced attorneys to take the cases. I've spoken with county attorney John Olson, and his recommendation is a hundred dollars an hour. But I think, I would prefer if we could just match Belltraming and CAS, because they are, they just rose it, and it would be, it'd be one of the higher counties then, and then we wouldn't have to change it again in a couple of years, but I mean, I'll leave that to your determination.
Questions?
No. How long has it been at seventy-five dollars?
I don't, I'm not really sure when it started, but I, I've been here almost nineteen years, and I don't remember it being any different.
I don't ever remember coming before the board since I've been on.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of an increase, but to a hundred and twenty-five would be a sixty-six percent jump. I definitely am in favor of the hundred dollar per hour, and would like to see something maybe even as early as next year. You know, if, if it's something where we could raise it slowly to a hundred and twenty-five, something like that, instead of one big jump. I think that's with everything. I, I think I'd rather see small increases yearly or every couple of years versus big jumps now and then.
Okay.
But I definitely think a raise is needed.
Thank you.
We, we would have room in the twenty twenty-five budget to adjust to either one hundred or one twenty-five this year. And as the trending information shows, we have not been spending the budget that we're allocating for that. You can see in those emails that, and here's, here's where it finally came down to. When I heard that CAS finally changed their rate, I said, okay, because I've been seeing these emails, who made the request? I asked Josh in administration, he said, it finally came from court administration. I'm like, great, I just need somebody to send me a letter to make a request, to get it before the board, so you have the opportunity to, to have this conversation. So that, that's why it's taken so long to get here. Because the last conversation I had with Jonathan about this was last June.
I, I noticed that.
So Ted, in, in, I actually support what you're saying. My question to you is, because it talks about here that, you know, being competitive is helping to retain attorneys here. So are you suggesting a hundred dollars now, and then possibly looking at, I don't know, look, reviewing it again next January? Or, or what are you thinking?
January or next June, you know, give it a year.
Okay.
Then we'd have data and everything like that, too. Because it, and like I said, to me, it's just the, the sixty-six percent jump at one time. And then to see what the other counties are at, too, they're, you know, I, I like to think Hubbard County is number one, but we want to be number one in spending, too, and stuff like that. But yeah, like I said, definitely, there's definitely a need for an increase.
Yeah, that's kind of why I asked the question, how long it's been, because we've, we've obviously should have been addressing this a lot sooner than, than we have. I, and I understand where Ted's coming from, and I would be okay with that if we did it all in one motion. So it's approved and done. So if we were going to do a hundred dollars now, and say, as part of the motion, it goes to a hundred and twenty-five in January. Twenty-six, so we're, we're set. We've already had two counties in the area go to a hundred and twenty-five. It isn't going to be long before some, the others start to, they're going to have the same problem. It's just a, it's a market adjustment, because you, you can't hire an attorney for that amount of money.
Oh, you can't.
Right. And since I handle three other colonies, I'm assuming it's going to be a trickle-down effect, so I will be doing this three more times.
Right.
So by doing that, Dave, then that also would give the attorneys that are currently, to give them the knowledge that, yeah, it's coming. So if I work for a hundred dollars the rest of the year, it's going to be to a hundred and twenty-five next January.
Okay.
Otherwise, I would go straight to one twenty-five. Wouldn't bother me, but I, I'm willing to kind of find a happy medium there, Ted's concerned.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we raise it to a hundred dollars an hour, and next June, we address the, the situation again, and look at it again, and possibly go to a hundred and twenty-five at that point. And, but then we could also see what the other counties, maybe these, I don't know how long the, I know CAS just went to a hundred and twenty-five, but how long has Belltraming been at one twenty-five? You know, and then are these other counties, all of a sudden, is everybody going to go a hundred and twenty-five an hour pushing? You know, so like I said, I don't want to set next year's rate today, but I do want to address it again. So the motion to raise to a hundred now, and then next June revisit it.
I agree with you, Ted, so I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second. All right. Any more discussion?
I struggle with that, Ted, from the standpoint of possibly losing an attorney. It takes way more time to train somebody, find somebody that's willing, and then training.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. On to highway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three items this morning. Yeah. Papers traded. The first item would be to review and award our project that we bid yesterday morning. It's for SAP zero-two-nine-six-zero-seven-zero-zero-seven, which is tied with zero-two-nine-six-four-zero-zero-one-two. And this is the roundabout project on the Cassa seven and Cassa forty intersection that we were awarded LRIP funds on. And the bids came in very well. The low apparent bidder is Glading Construction out of La Porte, Minnesota, and their bid was one million, four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and seventy cents.
Wasn't much separating the lowest two quotes.
No, no, fifty thousand dollars, that's an excellent bid.
You don't see it quite that close.
Yep, and both contractors were, or all four of them are really good, so I was very happy with the bid, and it's below our engineer's estimate, so bids are continuing to be lower than what we're seeing across the board.
That was going to be my question, how, how it came in?
It's about five hundred thousand lower, so, yeah, very, very good bid, yes. A good project, too. I'm excited to see this one go in and make improvements to that intersection.
Did you notice there blow up? I got the wrong intersection.
Select whichever email you want.
The blow up. Which one?
On the map.
Oh, the map?
Yeah.
I must have put in, thank you.
It's eighteen and seven, sorry, forty and seven.
Oh, that's really good.
Oh, that's the detour. Yeah, so that is where all the signs would be starting on seven, yep.
Yeah, I included the detour map just in case.
Yeah.
You guys get questions on it, you can see where the detour will be. It's kind of a inconvenient detour, but there's not many roads up on the north side of that intersection to use. And we're expecting about, what, three months, two and a half months, construction timeline, once it gets going.
It's definitely needed.
It is. It's, I drive that intersection all the time in the summer, and it's a terrible sight-distance intersection. Really excited for that one.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. The low quote of number one.
I'll second it.
Okay. Ted moves. Ashar seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried.
The next item is for our annual roadside weed spraying contract this year. We're doing things a little bit different. We're buying the chemical ourself, and then we're having NRM, Greg Hensel, is a certified weed sprayer for the county, so he'll go out and do the application, and then we'll play, pay his rate, our time, to complete, complete the roads that we've nominated for it. There's an error on the bid sheet to the top. It should be the weed quote versus the twenty-twenty-four snowplow truck. But the low, yeah, we're not there yet. The low quote was from Nutrient Solutions for fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the chemical. And then theirs did have a chemical tax that they'd add, once that was calculated out, about eleven dollars added to that.
I'll move to approve the low quote.
All right, David moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ted seconds. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried.
All right. And the last item I have is kind of a two-part item. It's to approve a grant agreement with MnDOT for our active transportation money that we received for our Cassa one project. And part of the agreement is, there's also a resolution that, summarizing it, it states that we just agree to pay the, what's not covered by the active transportation grant, so non-participating items, and to follow the process of obtaining the funding, and then correctly spending the funding. So there's a, there's a grant agreement, which includes pretty standard language, and then there's also the application that we submitted included in the agreement. And then there's also the resolution on the end for the agreement. And this was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars that they awarded to this project to cover sidewalk ADA improvements, some lighting, the five-foot bike lanes on Cassa one, some major improvements for pedestrians and bicycles on that road.
It's going to be interesting to see what it looks like when it's all done.
Yeah, it'll look a lot cleaner. I mean, just, just a profile, a lot cleaner profile going through, so.
Sure.
It'll be a really good update, I think, to that corridor.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, I'll second that. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Yeah, and then I think Adam has a couple of updates.
Yeah, I can give a quick construction update here. Our aggregate surfacing project, we just finished up the county roads this morning. We do got to move to Fern and Rockwood Township to finish that project up here in the next couple of weeks. Calcium chloride, we started that on five-twenty-seven in the southern half of the county. That's got a target completion date of July first. We did finish up the, the mantrap box, Cassa twenty-four and mantrap box culverts on the sixteenth of May. We finished the maintenance overlay on the forty-five and thirty-nine intersection on the ninth of May. Pavement messages and crosswalks, we completed that May sixteenth. The county pavement striping, we completed that May thirtieth. Just a quick outlook here, too, for the summer. We've got some better dates for the Cassa forty-five bridge. That's planning to start on the sixteenth of June, and we're estimating that through the end of August. Our LED stop sign and rumble strip project, that's planning to start the middle of July. We got a few other of our projects we're working on precons and schedules, so our Cassa one, the roundabout, and our Cassa thirteen and City of Nevis project, we're, we're still dialing in the schedules with the contractors there, so. Yeah, good start to the summer here, so.
It's nice to hear that your pavement messaging and painting stuff is done already.
Yep, we got that out of the way. Yep.
We still have the federal, the six-inch edgeline one to happen, but the other ones are completed, and they turned out really well.
Before you, calcium chloride, the gravel roads, I'm assuming you grade them and stuff first?
Yep, they go out and blade in shape, and they cut. If there's rumbles, they'll cut down and try to get out to the, the washboards. Kind of loosen up the material, and then they'll come and water them first before they apply and, and apply.
Because I know, I know we haven't had any rain.
Yeah, it's been a tough, tough summer for blading.
Yeah, and I think one-eighteen road I live on got bladed just a few weeks ago. And it's already, as you can imagine, going up that hill from seventy-one, that's already getting washboardy and.
Yeah, when it does rain, I kind of, I allow them to work a little overtime, just because it's so, it's been so rare the last four years that we've been getting good rains, that they got to go and do it when they can.
It's, it's another morning where I came over the crest of the hill, and there's a person on my side of the road coming up the hill, because it's washboardy on the other side, and.
Yeah, you just got to slow down, or, you know, not hit the gas.
People need to realize the damage they do to the roads when, just by their driving habits. Acceleration, braking, and speed kill gravel roads.
It is. One-eleven's getting hit really bad right now with the MnDOT project down, and it's, it's a lot of deceleration around those curves is what really causes those.
And I tell people that gravel roads would last twice as long if everybody drove on the right-hand side instead of down the middle.
Yeah, that, that's very true, too. Yeah, it's.
And it wouldn't cost any more money. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Nope, that was all.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have about ten minutes.
Do you want to do NRM, or start solid waste and stop solid waste?
Let's, uh, let's do NRM. Since, since Corey's here. Well, you've got.
Take nine minutes.
You've got eight minutes, anyway.
All right, I just have one item today. As you've heard, we've been working on our, the Garfield Lake Park up, off of Garfield Lake. We've started putting the fence up already, improved the parking lot there, and next, we need to have spent, a cement slab laid for the, the shelter that the ice racers and Garfield Lions have donated the funds for. So we're looking to get approval for a low quote of three thousand, one hundred and twenty from KL Concrete Auto Park Rabbits to put this twelve-by-twenty-by-six-inch concrete slab in. It includes the materials and the labor, and then the finish work on top of the concrete. And we had a deadline of July first, two thousand and twenty-five. The, yeah, the, the community up there is pretty, pretty excited, talking to, talking to a lot of the locals up there, so. Looking to get that, that quote from KL Concrete approved.
I was surprised there weren't any other quotes submitted.
So I sent it to, I can't remember, it was nine or twelve companies, and we only got one back by the, by that date.
Deadline?
Yep, so. I don't know if the, the July first deadline to get the work done kind of steered people away a little bit, but we brought it to the Parks Board and discussed, you know, should we relit the bids? Should we try to do this ourselves? And they discussed that this, this price is probably a pretty good, pretty good value nowadays.
I think it is.
If we did it ourself, and probably, with labor, it'd probably almost be double that amount, so. Yeah, that's what we're, we're looking at, and yeah, surprisingly, just one quote. And we did, we did budget for this, for, for site improvements in our budget.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Tom moves. Dave seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you. And this four thousand dollar shelter, it's, we're not actually, we're buying it, but the funds were donated. Do we need to get approval for that, too, to just, to purchase that?
Who's putting it up?
Have you had a, have you had, have you had a resolution to accept the donation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we accepted, you guys accepted them on whatever date that was, two eighteen twenty-five.
Did it specify for this project?
Yep.
Then it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
So who's doing the construction work on the?
The shelter?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can put that up. The parks maintenance workers can put that up. It's the Akeley ATV Club bought the exact same one, and it, it looked beautiful, and they said it was pretty simple to put together, so. Enough to fit three picnic tables under. Yeah, we already have the picnic tables, too, ready to go.
Very good.
Should be good.
Making progress.
Yeah. Yep, so, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, guys are staying busy. The parks are busy, so. Yeah, it's going, going good.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few more minutes before we need to go to our public hearing. Is there anything we can cover?
Start with Josh, couldn't we? You just wouldn't get everything done, or you want to wait?
That's up to the, to the board, I guess.
I say we start with Josh.
Okay, Josh. Made you wait, and now we're bringing you forward.
You'd have been half done, though.
Just have to go really quick. Good morning. So the first agenda item I have this morning is to review and approve a quote for a mulch colorizer. So this colorizer that we're looking at purchasing would be used in conjunction with our horizontal, horizontal grinder that we purchased from Roto Chopper through a MPCA Organics grant. This grinder is, would be set up and configured to use, or sorry, our grinder is set up and configured to use with this specific colorizer from Roto Chopper. Funding for the colorizer would come from a separate MPCA grant that we received, which was the Greater Minnesota Waste Reduction, Reuse, Recycling, and Composting Grant, that had a twenty-five percent match requirement. Cooperative purchasing is being utilized for this purchase through Sourcewell. And the quote from Roto Chopper was twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. And kind of how this works is it's, the whole colorizer unit's just on a big skid, and it's set up to plug right into our horizontal grinder, and has all the connections and the pumps and everything required to utilize. So kind of how it'd work is we'd more than likely be grinding our material once, and then on a regrind, we'd add the color and work with a, a company to figure out what colors we want and, and do that process, so.
Josh, when this gets kind of further along, are you going to allow commercial entities to be able to buy the mulch also?
Yeah, I mean, I think they, they could right now. I mean, we're not going to have any restrictions on it. I mean, I think, you know, a lot of this, again, I think I've mentioned, is going to be kind of trial and error and seeing what works, and I mean, I think that could be a good solution for just getting a large volume, getting it out of there, and then freeing up our space on site, so.
Yeah, yeah, that actually would be the way I would prefer it is. If the quality is as good as they're able to purchase, if they're able to purchase from us.
Yep.
And then sell to the consumer, we won't be competing with them then.
So you had talked about, you know, you had trouble getting it really clean? So all this will be taken care of, so it'll be?
Um, so I mean, it's, it's just, there's just more fines in the mulch, so. Right now, I mean, it's, talking to Roto Chopper, I mean, a lot of people do it like we're doing it now. It's just, you just end up with more fines, so. In the future, I think I've mentioned, it'd be nice to have a screener, which would help with this process, but, you know, the way it is now, it still works. It's just, won't be quite, there'd be more fines in the materials, so.
I will move to approve.
All right, Ashar moves. Is there a second?
Ms. Ted, I'll second.
Ted seconds. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Got time for the next one?
We got about two minutes.
All right. So the next item I have is to review and approve a quote for a radial stacking conveyor. This is, again, to be used with our grinding, our grinder for storing mulch and shingles. There are many different options of conveyors out there, and it's kind of hard to really compare apples to apples. Um, there are many different options of conveyors out there and it's kinda hard to really compare apples to apples on the, the options that we could get into. Um, ultimately, I reached out to three separate companies, um, they gave us what they would recommend. And in the end, we felt that Roto Chopper and their quote that they provided would be the best match for our needs. Um, again, funding for this would be coming from that MPCA Greater Minnesota Waste Reduction Reuse Recycling and Composting Grant. And if purchasing through Roto Chopper would be utilizing the Sourcewell, uh, cooperative purchasing as well. The three quotes we received, uh, the lowest was from Roto Chopper. And that is with the sixty, or thirty-six inch belt width and then a sixty-five inch conveyor. And then it has a magnet on there as well, a plate magnet, which will help to um, just have one more pass to get any metal that might be left in the material. Um, whether it's shingles or, or um, brush. Uh, the other ones we looked at were a little bit larger, which is why the price was substantially um. More, uh, they were looking at a forty-two inch belt and an eighty foot length conveyor. And it was just kinda what each of them companies recommended and had to offer, so. Um, the quote from Roto Chopper fits into our grant and uh, you know, we had budgeted with, with our grant budget. I think we had estimated a hundred and fifty thousand for this colorizer and the conveyor from Roto Chopper. And with this, these two were only, I think we're about three thousand over budget, so it, you know, it meets our budget needs and, and uh. Meets our specifications and would be um, helpful for uh, stacking and conveying all of our piles on site, so.
Are, are you sharing this with other counties?
Um, the, we'd, we'd have it available, it's just I don't know if it's gonna make sense to be hauling like the conveyor around. That's something we'll just, if we can, if it makes sense, depending on other counties would be doing, we would do that and have a rate for that as well, but.
With the conveyor from Roto Chopper being narrower and fifteen feet shorter, that's okay for?
I think the stacking height will be fine, we don't need to stack it, you know, get that extra height for stacking. And then, you know, they have this set up to, with, in use with the grinder size we have, you know, so. We know, you know, they kinda feel that it'll work because, you know, they're using it on the same size grinder that we're using, so. Of course, a six inch wider belt, you'd have, you'd be able to spread that material out a little bit wider, you know, going over a magnet or, or whatever, so it'd be. Beneficial, but I think um, this will meet our needs and, and stay within our budget, so.
Thank you.
Alright, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hey, Ted moves, is there a second? I'll second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried. Thank you. Alright. I need a motion to uh, close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Char moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ted seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this has been the process, we um, approved uh, capital. Planning policy a few years ago and stated in there that every year annually, we're gonna review our five-year plan. Um, and we've had several conversations uh, about that over the last few months. Um, again, it's always, it's always an in process, process plan, like the five-year highway plan. Um, things could get moved forward or backwards or deferred or not done at all, based on uh, funding that we do have. Um, but uh, having a capital plan in place is one of the mechanisms that uh, it shows good. Planning, good resource management, it's also necessary for the type of um, funding, the bonding we went through for. For this project, we had to show that that was a priority. Um, there's been very little change to the plan as you've seen. Although we did punch in some more of the background, there's a couple of, still a couple of formatting issues in here. Where the page breaks just don't line up very well. Primarily because if I push them where I don't want them to be, then they split something I don't want split, so I've just left a couple of blank pages in here. But the, the key is that uh, we have kind of this. This plan and we've identified those um, those deferred maintenance projects and when we look at them. We have the money to work those into the regular budget, you know, primarily because we captured, captured this. Um, capital planning money going forward, so. The only um, projects on here that we don't have funding for are projects that we haven't decided we're gonna do. Or projects we know we're gonna do only if, when, when we get grant money, so. Uh, whether we ever do anything with the old jail is contingent on investigation and a long-term determination. Um, whether we get to do the transit garage is dependent on getting a grant to do that and uh, further. Further work on Deep Lake Park will be contingent on, on grant awards as well, so. Uh, the rest of the infrastructure stuff that we're talking about here is manageable within the budget that we have.
So the Minnesota Housing Finance Match that we didn't get the grant from, we just found that out recently. Uh, we're just gonna leave it there for a while and apply again, some point probably?
For the um, yes, for the Housing Trust Fund matching grant, yeah, we, that was, that was bad news that we. They overspent that and we didn't get any of that, those matching grant funds, so it will come to the HRA Board. Um, I don't know if it's gonna be next week or two weeks from now, or if it'll be in July. If we want to self-fund that with some amount to start, or if we want to wait until we have an opportunity to reapply for those funds. Um, because when we look at this, this economic forecast, we were always showing. This owner occupied two twenty-five, that was the placeholder we thought we were gonna get from that grant fund and um, we haven't gotten that, so. Uh, I'm sorry, the MHFA match is right here and then down below is the owner occupied redevelopment program, so. The option will be for the board to set some money aside to self-fund a portion of that and get it started, or wait till another grant opportunity.
What I was thinking of, so maybe we'll just think about this, cause when we discuss it at the EDA, but uh. If, if we don't think it's likely that we are able to get a grant in the next two or three years. Are we interested in maybe doing something else with that, like starting an RLF? Just food for thought.
Yep, so that'll be coming up on an HRA meeting, but yes, that, that was, that was bad news that we received recently. But that's my overview of um. The capital improvement plan relative to the public hearing.
Is there any more discussion? Questions?
No, I guess uh, for the public's information is when these, when it comes time to spend this money, it still comes down to whether the board approves it or not. This isn't something that's set in stone, the money's gonna be spent regardless, but we have to make the final decision, so I, I like that. And I just wanted the public, if, if anybody's viewing this to understand that.
Okay, is there anything else after review? Thought it looked pretty good, um, there were, I think I found a couple of typos in it, but. Nothing major that didn't change the intent of the, the wording, but uh, overall, I think it looked pretty good, alright.
I, I might have had one question, I think it was this document, yeah, um, on page. Page twenty, it says uh, I believe it's page twenty-two. Yeah, page twenty-two of thirty-seven, or page twenty itself. One more up, there you go. Um, the mechanical systems, air handling units, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. So is that actually, we need eight of them, or is it just put on there eight times?
I believe that that's, that there's eight of them, but I believe that's a combined cost.
Okay, cause I was looking at that and you know, that's three million, one hundred and somewhat thousand dollars. Wow, over three million dollars for, for air handling units uh, in, in twenty thirty-one, so, yeah. And all in the law enforcement center.
And it, and it doesn't mean they need to be done then, this was, this is the raw data from the ICS form. So, when you look at this chart. This chart is the itemized listed facility costs. But they, so that's the deferred maintenance schedule.
Yeah.
If it's not showing up on the five-year plan, we haven't allocated for it yet.
Okay.
So, twenty thirty-one is not, is off the, off the current chart, there will, you know, but we should probably take a look at those things further out too, to know. Whether we're gonna have that or, or not, but I, I believe, I believe that that is. It's not three million dollars for air handlers.
Yeah, like I said, it's listed there eight times, but it's all this, it's all the exact same listing, law enforcement, mechanical systems, air handle unit. Thirty-two, twenty thirty-one in the same dollar amount, so it just.
As a, as a matter of fact, some of the mechanical systems, some of the fans, exhaust fans that we've got over there. Um, we are planning to replace as we're doing the construction project. Because we're gonna have people doing some work in the area and we've got a couple that are giving us problems. So we'll be coming through with, I think, tens of thousands of dollars of replacement for some additional systems.
And that would make sense at that time, it's like when they do a, you know, put new pavement on the street and then you, and then a couple of years later, they dig it up and do the sewer and water. I've seen that and it's, thank you.
Alright, so do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need to close, well, if, if there's no public comment, then we need to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Alright, we will, is there a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting?
I'll second.
David moves, Char seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried. Is there?
Then a motion to approve the plan, yep.
David makes a motion to approve the capital plan, is there a second?
Mr. Ted will second.
Ted seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried. Okay, Josh, you may continue.
Alright.
Alright, so I think, believe I'm on um, eight C on my agenda item. Items, uh, so the, this one is to review, review and approve a quote for a service truck. So we're looking to transfer the two thousand one service truck from the highway department. Uh, for the trade-in estimate they received of sixteen thousand dollars to the solid waste department. Uh, this transaction has been budgeted in the solid waste capital improvement plan the last um, few years. Kinda waiting on them to finally receive their uh, new service truck, which they uh, received earlier this year. So we, we're right now using a nineteen ninety-five uh, hand-me-down truck from the, I think it was from the survey department, so it was an old survey truck. Um, that we've kinda retrofitted into our service truck, so this will be a decent upgrade for us. Um, with fairly small uh, investment there and we'd look at auctioning off our older truck uh, later this year, so. Let's see if there's any, yeah, and the truck from the highway department has a welder crane and air compressor already on it, so that will be helpful. Um, and should meet our needs in our department um, for the time being, so.
Um, do you have employees who are certified to do the welding and so forth?
Yeah, we have, yep, we have welding, we do a lot of welding on site.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ted makes the motion, is there a second? I'll second that, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Alright, and the next agenda item is to review and approve quote for landfill grading. So we're looking to complete some work at our north transfer station, um, pretty much to create a storage area for our clean shingles. Um, in mulch and concrete that are outside our landfill footprint. Um, with the grinder, we had, or previously, we haven't ground or stockpiled any of our shingles up at the north transfer station, they just went into our demolition. Cell, so we're looking at a, creating a spot to um, be able to stockpile them when we haul the grinder up there to do. Shingles and brush up to the north station. Um, and also our, right now, our mulch and our concrete um, storage is on top of the existing landfill. So as we continue to fill that up, we'll have to, to move that area as well. Um, off, off the working face of the landfill. So we've cleared uh, the brush from the site and there's a pretty steep grade in the hill there that we need to level out and just uh. Get water to slope the right way and, and uh. Do some site work on it for that, uh, and we'd also look at having uh, our seasonal cover work completed. Um, just with the intermediate cover uh, on the landfill, open portion of the landfill as well. And we have funds uh, budgeted for landfill cover work um, this year at our north station. And looking at the, the quote we received, a quote from Gladen Construction, um, one for a D seven and one for a D eight dozer. And I think uh, just looking at the size of the project and being, the more material be able to move, we'd be looking at uh. Going with the D eight for the three hundred and forty-three dollars per hour. And this rate is the hourly rate that the highway, the highway department sends out for, for contractors um, on an annual basis. And it's uh, just matching and, and is using that rate. And then they are estimating um, possibly about four to five days of work, again, depending on the size of the dozer, dozer. And that's what we're looking at.
So we're looking at just one dozer, not a team, alright, okay, and uh, what? What, what I kinda like about this is that Gladens is right, basically right across the road.
Yeah, we work with them on all, you know, a lot of different projects and it's really nice to have them there, so.
I know when Gary was working up there, he'd mentioned if they needed a hose fixed or something, they could just go right over there and.
Yep, we utilize them a lot for that and.
Have that working relationship.
Any other type of emergencies that come up, so.
Where's that site work gonna be occurring, is it gonna be south of the building or?
Um, so if you drive up to the, like, up to the landfill working face, so it's, you know, you drive around the building and go. Wrap around and go all the way to the north and just where we're filling in our current cell, it's just to the uh, east. So we have east of the road going up there.
Okay.
So we have our boundaries, our boundary for filling waste is on the west side of that road and what we're clearing out would be our. On the east side of the road, so it's not a huge tract, it's probably maybe two, two acres, three acres, but.
Basically on the top of the hill.
Top of the hill, but on the right side of the road.
Okay.
Has there been a lot of construction and demolition activity happening?
Um, just uh, that comes in up there, you mean, um, so typically we. You know, at the south station, we're typically putting in about, depending on the year, between eight to ten thousand cubic yards. Um, of compacted material annually in the landfill and up at our north station, we're typically between two and, and three thousand cubic yards, so. Um, and it's pretty steady, I mean, there's, you know, normally we're right around that two to three and then you get a bump one year where we might go up to five, but it. You know, it just kinda depends on what people are tearing down and bringing in, so.
Alright, is there a motion? David moves, is there a second? Tom seconds, um. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Alright, and that's all I had, unless anyone has any questions. Alright, thank you.
We will move on to human services.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, I have with me Jason Ness, our uh, Heartland Express, the transit supervisor. Um, so today we are just bringing forward the um, contract or the. What's that, the operating? Yeah, the operating contract, contract for twenty twenty-six. Um, the only thing that's changed really um, from last year is that the, the local cost share went up. However, we do have enough money that we get from fares and contracts um, that more than, will more than cover that, so.
This is funding secured?
Uh, we are in the process right now of, of um, putting the application in, it's um, due on June thirtieth, so, but yeah, we.
So federally or state, there is not cutbacks to this that you're anticipating?
No, that was just, and, and the part that they did change was that additional five percent, cause it used to be five percent. Um, it was more than that before COVID, then they went back to, they went to zero and then they came back with five, um, and so. Um, they're, we're back to um, the ten percent, but again, um, and we are, we are also working on um. Some additional contracts that we. on, um, some additional contracts that we, um, can help with some of that money as well. Um, we, I got a call from the chamber last week, um, wondering about some options for, um, running a bus for the, uh, Second Street stage. And so we are looking at that actually to, um, I think we're gonna meet beginning of next week or later, later this week or beginning of next week. Um, I've just gotta nail down the details, but this, basically we would just provide a service that would, um, a contract service with, uh, the, um, the chamber and/or the, the downtown business, um, and make it affordable and provide rides to and from, um, possibly to just a regular, like a parking lot some ways away or maybe in, you know, picking up, dropping off people in town. So we'll see kind of what that develops, but that'll be another good income source that will help to, uh, fund this.
Well, Jason, you had mentioned that in L S meeting that you were trying to get some routes to Nevis?
Correct.
Has, has, what's the status on that?
Uh, we're still working out with the details with some of the city managers, um, trying to get that route from, um, Nevis, Akeley and La Porte. Um, it's still kind of in the developmental stage right now. Um, I've contacted a couple of people and trying to see what we have for demand for rides up in, in that area, so.
And then that would be in addition to this total contract amount then?
That'd be addition to that, yes.
Well, you have to, um, increase your hours if you do the Second Street stage.
Yeah, we're, so we'll have to do, uh, it'll be a, an after-hours type, type contract. And so, um, we'll have to work on all the logistics of it, but depending on the hours and what it exactly it looks like. Um, but yes, it'll be additional hours or off, off normal hours, but we'll get it figured out hopefully.
Okay. Any more questions? Right, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Char moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Tom seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Closed? Motion carried.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Administrator.
I was reminded by Gina that the same statute that allows us to close a meeting for, um, uh, performance evaluation also requires us to put a summation of the meeting in the next minute or in the next, uh, board meeting. So this is just a very basic summary stating that the performance review was had held and identified a couple of the items on that. I don't know if there are any comments on that, but that's.
I, I read through it. I thought it looked fine.
I thought it was a good summary.
Good job Denise. And then the item on here is, this was like the last conversation point we had during that closed meeting, um, was, uh, my request to ask you to consider changing the ninety day severance to a six month severance in my contract, um, just based on four years of the types of reviews that I've had. So that's up for discussion and your action or or decision today. It'd be, it's exactly the same, as you can see it, red lines, just that one item.
I thought about it, uh, quite a bit. You know, I have to think about taxpayers too. So I prefer to stay at three months. One of my reasons is, um, one of them, this probably would be like a template for a future administrator. They'll look at that and says, oh, okay, let's just use this one and you've got six months.
It is, it is a template from the, uh, M C M A, um, board, yeah.
Got that extra three months, that current pay, I mean, say for the public, there's nothing, no reason right now for any dismissal. This is just thinking in the future. But we're taking today's rate, that's thirty-eight thousand dollars. That would have to be a lump sum payment. And, and, and to, uh, to reach this point and say with a future administrator, I would think that, uh, you'd want to dismiss the, the, the person and, uh, to have to go and pay six months for someone that you want to dismiss. I'm not too certain about that.
So the clause is if there are grounds, there's no, there's no severance?
Well, that's if there's, uh, malfeasance.
Right.
What about, uh, and, you know, and that's good performance? That they, that's not in that clause.
Right, right. No, it's.
It's not in that clause.
Malfeasance, yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, that, that clause only malfeasance. And another reason would be, um, for a future board is, um, if there is a, uh, non-performing administrator and they look at this six months of a lump sum that's gotta be paid, there might be a hesitancy to even make a dismissal. Because of, well, we gotta pay him six months while we're looking for another one and hiring another person. And six months is a long time.
That's a fair comment. From the other perspective, finding an administrator to move to your county without a six month severance is also very difficult. It's a great leap of faith for somebody to move to a community, um, knowing that it's the only position that serves at the pleasure of the board, um, for that time, which is why it's the only position that has a contract even with this type of provision in it. Six month is the max allowed by state statute, which is why that's the recommendation. But again, I put it up for your, for your discussion and determination. We had that bit of a conversation.
Jeff, do you know of all the counties that have administrators, um, how many have adopted the six month?
At least two thirds. There are several that don't have any severance provisions.
I will add to the, for, for discussion purposes and it's all, it's also kind of protection for the administrator in today's political climate. It doesn't take much to understand that with an election, things can change drastically. Somebody could have an agenda just to change something. There's no protection for your administrator against that. And with the amount of work that is done in that position and the, uh, I think over the last four or five years, however long Jeff's been here, he's proven that, uh, very trustworthy and I think he deserves some sort of protection from an anomaly that could occur with an election.
So are you suggesting that we would adopt this for Jeff and then, um, it could be looked at at any time for a different administrator?
End up hiring a new administrator, you can reset it to whatever you want.
That's what I was kind of thinking. I, I understand Tom's, uh, ideas here too, because I think about the, the taxpayers, you know, um, and that's where I was trying to think of a, a scenario, and, and you just brought one up though, of where if you're performing and you're able to perform, why would we get rid of you? You know, so then it's like, why would there be any need for any severance? Uh, and so hopefully, I hope that's the way it works out, you know, that.
And, and that's my preference and plan too, but over the last four years.
Years down the road, you know.
Boards have turned sixty or eighty percent and administrators have, well, administrators are leaving the profession because there have been elections where they have not had the security in their positions.
Yeah.
And I think we've all seen that.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen it in the area. It's not a very comfortable position to be in if you're an administrator.
It, this isn't gonna change how I do my job. Like, you, you asked at the conversation last week and this was the thing that I said that you could do to support me in that in addition to the other things you are doing. Um, it's not gonna change how I do my job.
And like I say, that's, I, I look at these things, even the ninety day ones, you know, it's kind of like, I'm hoping that i- if everything goes right, you resign years down the road and then there isn't any severance that needs to be paid out. I mean, that's ideal with, with any employee.
Yep.
So.
I just look at it, I, you know, from my position and perspective, I, I think he's earned it. And I think it gives him a certain level of protection against what we've all witnessed has happened in the areas around us.
And, and Steve, how do you feel?
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm thinking about other scenarios in different positions, you know, what kind of securities are available for, for those individuals. Um, and this is a unique situation, um, and a unique position, I guess. Um, I, I, I kind of think six months might be a little bit long, but, um, but then again, hopefully, no matter who's serving in that position, that it, it wouldn't come to the severance part of it. Um, now, we talked about, there was discussion about political changes and so forth. Um, I think we as a community have shown a fair amount of faith in the, the bro, boards that are serving now and previous boards to conduct the business of the county as, as needed and do it appropriately. And I think Jeff has done a fine job of, of doing his job and providing us with materials and all of the information we need to make decisions. Um, I would hope that it wouldn't come to that sort of, sort of say, political upheaval that someone would choose to, or persons would choose to be on a board to remove someone from a, from employment. Um, and I really don't see that sort of vindictiveness in the, in the communities we have. Um, but I, I, I do think six months is a little bit long. I would be more comfortable with four, but, um, that's just my perspective. Um, so I'm, I'm willing to listen to, I guess, a motion.
I, I guess one thing too, just from my, that I want to add, um, we all found out that if a commissioner doesn't show up for ninety days, then they're done. So it's kind of like ninety days for commissioners and hundred and eighty days or, you know, six months for administrators. So it's, I don't know, I could go either way. And, and like I say, I, I kind of feel it's, it's a moot point, because I don't think this board and I can't imagine, you know, another board just, for political reasons, terminating Jeff, but.
Yeah, it takes three votes to terminate. I mean, so just, even if you had one bad apple on the board, that's not gonna terminate your administrator.
No, that's true.
I've watched it happen. I'll make a motion, uh, based on the fact that, uh, Jeff asked us in his review what we could do to support him. And this was the one item that we could do to support him. And I feel he's doing a good job. I'd make a motion to approve, uh, amending the contract to include six month severance.
Okay, David moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Char seconds. Any more discussion? I guess just one question I would have. We had talked about, um, the current employment agreement, um, with the desire to be to carry that over into another new employment agreement for a following administrator? Or would it all be reviewed again at that point in time and perhaps change the parameters?
Completely separate contract if you hired a new administrator.
Yeah, I would think if, if we, if it came to that and we, say if it happened right now, we had to hire somebody new, I would want to go with the ninety days.
Yep.
But then if they prove themselves, like I think Jeff kind of has, then you could always modify it in the future, a few years down the road like we're doing now.
I just wanted clarification.
I have a question. Would, for us as a board, do we want that as part of the motion to be reviewed at the hiring of a new administrator? So that would, that would force this to come forward in case, we could all not be here by the time Jeff is.
This is true.
And so that would be a trigger that the current board then would have to look at this language.
But if you were.
That's necessary because you, you, if you're hiring a new administrator, you're gonna be reviewing the entire contract prior to.
It'd be a separate contract. So I don't think it needs to be part of.
How would that be brought up kind of a thing?
The same way it was when I was hired, uh, typically through the, um, through the service that you found to recruit. If you find someone to recruit, you would, they would, that would be part of the service they would provide, negotiating a contract, bringing them on board, making sure that works. Uh, if you chose to do it yourself, then you would have to remember internally to do that.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm thinking. The future boards, that little part that Char talked about, would they even know about it?
That process is a part of the typical search and hiring process and it, it would be independent of any action today.
Okay.
There's very few positions that are actual contracted positions versus just employment. So it should be part of the standard procedure of doing it.
Okay.
So, and just a reminder somehow to HR, because if we hired from within, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a search.
No, but the contract would still be a, an, a, a part of the process for bringing someone on board.
Good.
Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Update. Anything else from the administrator?
I do not have anything unless you have questions.
Who's, who's all going tomorrow? I was planning to go. Tom's going.
I'll be there.
And, and you there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just telling Tom, I was asked Friday to, oh, well, I'll bring this up at committee reports. I'll be there.
Well then, uh, you concerned?
All righty, beauty. Um, what should I do first? I'm gonna first update one from the northwestern Minnesota, uh, northwestern, uh, Minnesota Juvenile Center. I had announced about the cream of the crop awards and stuff like that. So of course, the day after our meeting, I got the official news release. Uh, winners announced for the twenty twenty-five cream of the crop awards, recognizing farm to school and early care leaders across Minnesota. This is from St. Paul, Minnesota. The Minnesota Department of Agriculture is proud to announce the winners of the twenty twenty-five Minnesota Grown Cream of the Crop Awards for Farm to School and Early Care. This new content, contest recognizes K through twelve school districts, early care centers and family daycares that go above and beyond to promote the service, uh, foods grown and raised in Minnesota, uh, farmers and producers. This year's winners have earned the title of cream of the crop in their respective categories, and that would be school districts, uh, of the year would be the Minneapolis Public Schools. Uh, that's surprising. Uh, and, and family daycare of the year, Little Skeeter's Daycare out of Bagley, Minnesota. Then, uh, Minnesota continues to lead the way in farm to school, creating stronger connections between local farms, classrooms, communities, says MDA Commissioner Thom Peterson. We're proud to recognize the schools and early care providers that are making local food a vital part of how, uh, how we nourish students and invest in real resilience, local economies that support small family farms. Applicants were asked to share the details about their local purchasing practices, how they promote and educate students about local foods and how they engage with the broader communities through events and activities. In their applications, cream of the crop school districts of the year winner, Minneapolis Schools highlighted their longstanding commitment to farm, with farm to school. We have sourced farm direct i- items from hundreds of producers since our programs began in two thousand thirteen. We anticipate spending more than five hundred thousand dollars on Minnesota grown produce, produce, grains, beans and proteins again next school year. This locally grown food is served in, in entrees, sides and salad bars in more than sixty cafeterias throughout our districts. Uh, farm to school programs reach K through twelve classrooms extending into the early care and family daycare centers across Minnesota. Uh, Mary Charles, owner of the cream of the crop family daycare of the year, Little Skeeter's Daycare in Bagley, said that children are in daycare, uh, children in my daycare learn every day about good nutrition. They plant and grow all their own vegetables this year and will be planting fruit trees. We make jams, jellies and they're, they freeze all of their vegetables that we grow. In addition to the top awards, several schools and daycare providers were honored with outstanding in the field recognition at three levels. And the Golden Drumstick Honor, and that's the one that went to, uh, the Minnes- Northwest Minnesota Juvenile Center here in Bemidji. And, uh, let's see. Then it goes on to winners of the Grown Cream of the Crop School District and Family Care of the Year Awards will each receive exclusive rights to use Minnesota Grown Cream of the Crop branding for the award year along with. Each receive exclusive rights to use Minnesota grown cream of the crop branding for the award year along with commemorative plaques. Outstanding in the field honorees will receive exclusive rights to use Minnesota grown. Outstanding in the field branding, uh, for the awards and a signed certificate. To learn more about cream of the crop awards, visit the contest website. So I know Shar had asked about the drumstick, uh, golden drumstick and all that, so that was kinda like second place. And like I say, it's kinda hard when, in, in, in meetings to listen to what they're saying and take notes at the same time, so I know it, sometimes I miss a lot of stuff. Uh, so that was my update for there. Uh, and another thing, uh, volunteered with Tom. At the, uh, freshwater festival at Camp Wilderness, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, it was very enjoyable. I wish the weather would have been nicer. It, it was kinda drizzling when I got there, but it, the, the rain did stop and. And, uh, one thing I've gotta say, uh, I don't know how teachers do it. Those were fifth and sixth graders, as I recall.
Sixth graders.
Sixth graders, um, I just say, I, I, I mentioned that to the teachers that I was with, uh, how do you do it every day? But, but the kids overall, you know, hundreds.
Yeah, there was over a hundred, it was a lot.
Yeah, I mean, there was how many buses and that, it was, so with, with that many kids and as well behaved as most of them were, and, and, you know, I, I thought it was pretty good.
And they were very attentive to the speakers. I mean, they were wanting to learn. It's a good program.
And so was I. So, I, I'll probably, if I have time, I'll probably do that again.
Yeah, I like doing it.
And then the, the one meeting I did have was the Mississippi Headwaters Board, uh, let's see, uh. We talked about the clean drain and dry flyer that was, uh, we're putting out. Uh, we did have one, uh, planning and zoning thing, uh, was in northern township. Uh, it was basically there again, a non, a legal nonconforming lot, uh, they wanna build a new house. They had issues, they were with us actually earlier, uh, uh, that was actually last year. Uh, they found out that, uh, where they wanted to put the septic was too close to the neighbor's well. So they had to come up with an alternate site and we had to approve that. Uh, we also had, uh, requests for, uh, some grant funding. The Aiken Land Department had requested, uh, because of erosion on the Mississippi River, they've lost a couple of campsites. And, um. Because of that, uh, they wanted to put in two new campsites and, and get a grant for eighty-five hundred dollars to do that. We asked them to come back with more information. Of course, our concern, main concern was maybe the erosion is more important to be looking at. And he said that the preliminary, uh, estimates were like four hundred thousand dollars, which. The Mississippi Headwaters Board doesn't have that kinda money to, to grant. So he's gonna, the, the Aiken Land Department's gonna come back next month with, uh, hopefully answers to the questions that we had. And, uh, I guess that about covers it for the Mississippi Headwaters Board, and that was all that I had.
Just a quick question about the, the changing or the erosion along the river. Has it been identified of why it's eroding? Is it due to the river channel changing course or? Was it human activities? Was that ever clarified?
Uh, on this one, well, I guess that's part of the question that we, that they're gonna come back with, but a lot of what we see is. It's usually on bluffs and a lot of it, I know in one in Beltrami County that we did donate some money to a couple of years ago. I know the area, it's, it's sand and even just walking down to the river, it's like the sand is just rolling down and. And once that gets started, especially if you get people involved and it's a spot that they like to go to swim or hang out or whatever. Uh, I know in the Beltrami County one, we had put in, uh, uh, helped pay for, uh, uh, stairways down. And then erosion control along the sides of the stairways. And so like I say, I hope to get more information on this and see if there's something. But yeah, that's, I guess that's the big thing with a, a lot of these things with the Mississippi Headwaters Board is trying to, to. The, the biggest concerns we have is, is erosion. Of course, there is also development, but a lot of it just, it seems the bigger environmental concern for me is the erosion that's happening.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, I had several. Uh, one was the Kitsikami, um, Library, uh, Budget Committee Meeting. Um, there we were just, uh, going over preliminary, uh, budgets for twenty twenty-six. We kinda sent Melissa back to revise them a little bit, cause she was a little high and we don't know. Where, uh, we're, we're trying to find a, a level of acceptance from counties. Because there's some that are saying we can't go up any, some are saying, well, we, maybe we can do this, but. We sent her back to, uh, revise the preliminary request. Um, and then we had the, I had the Parks Board, uh, meeting and, uh. Some things from there was, um, the archaeological survey is done. Right now they gotta write up the report and they found nothing, but it'd probably take them a couple of weeks to write up a report to say they did, they found nothing. Let's see, uh, and then, uh, since that's done, um, Cory sent out some RFPs for demo work. So as soon as we get the report back on the archaeological survey and it's accepted by the, been approved by the state. Then the demo work can begin. Hopefully in July. Uh, let's see, uh. Hartland Park, um, we had discussion on, you know, as, as a result of our discussion here at the board on, uh, more pickleball space. They're going to go and, uh, walk the area over with, take measurements and see if there's an appropriate area. Um, right at Hartland Park to expand and, uh, for four courts, probably better for four than six. And, uh, also we're, they can add some parking. Sort of gonna look it over and see what they come up with there. And, uh, another one that's, um, kinda related but was mentioned was the, uh, the bike trail. Up by, uh, Task State Park, uh, that should be finished, uh. August fourteenth and that's going from the tunnel to the park.
Yeah, I was up there, uh, last weekend and drove through the east entrance there and there's. Fair amount of construction activity happening there, so was glad to see him making progress.
So, hopefully, it should be done by August fourteenth and then. Whether or not they get, you know, it could be a long time before they get a, uh, a grant. Or any kind of, um, funding from the state to go from there all the way to. To Hartland Park. Yeah, that's what, that's what the goal is, but.
Did you guys discuss pickleball courts next to the tennis court by Hugo's?
Well, there's a, that would be, uh, you know, a, uh, state, I mean, city park. Oh yeah, they're, they're, they discussed that, they discussed possibly having a, some courts up on, uh, Ferris Park. Maybe, uh, a couple of courts in Deep Lake Park, but, you know. They kinda think, they, they, they'd like to go and check out options at Hartland Park first. Cause that's kinda where people are going to play pickleball.
So is there, is there any federal or, I don't think there's any state funding, is there any federal funding now for stuff like that? To come alongside an established park that you know of?
Hmm, not that I know of, something to check on for sure.
So, I know people are trying to fundraise, so I'm guessing, besides the fact that we, if we budgeted money at Hartland. Fundraising dollars could be used for somewhere. I'm asking that as a question.
Excuse me, and then I had SWCD meeting. And, uh, just a few things that came out of that was, um. They're do, there are some projects they're working on, our shoreline restorations on Beltane Lake, Lake Pelaginet. Area, they had a pretty good presentation on both of those two. Uh, replacing Culver on Bender Creek. Uh, oh, there's a pit closure that they're working on in County Twenty on the east side of Long Lake. It's kinda filled up with a lot of manure and, uh, they're working on, uh, getting that closed off. And then they're updating the fiscal agent contracts for both the Leach River, uh. One Waterstead, one plan and the Crowning River Waterstead Plan. And that's about all I got.
Okay, um, I didn't have any, any meetings of significance. Um, the one thing I wanted to mention was, uh, Senior Day at the Fair is coming up in July. So I just wanted to remind about the donation that has typically been given, uh, to the, to the, uh. Senior event and then, uh, we'll need, uh, County Commissioner. To be present to make a small speech at that.
So I told her that, um, if we tend to, we got an ambulance committee meeting for that day. I told her if we don't go to that, I'd be glad to go there and do that.
I'm gonna be gone that day, so I know I won't be able to attend.
So there, yeah, we need to have some tentative in case either one of us can't do that.
All right, well, that's all I wanted to mention.
Yeah, if you end up not making it and that, just let me know, cause I can jump in. But it'd be good to have you there, Steve, and have you do it.
Yeah, that's what I told her, usually we can look at the chair, the first option.
So.
Be prepared this year, maybe. That wasn't last year.
So, um, Dave, I'm gonna let you take the Heritage and the HLDC, the only other meeting I had besides those two is Mahabi. And, um, we talked a lot about potential budget cuts, one of the, at the federal level. And one thing that has been cut for sure is, uh, the Energy Assistance Program, which was widely used in this area. So not quite sure what, um, they're gonna do with that for funding. And then, uh, I don't know, I, I, if any of the rest of you read this, but the Isanti County Board. Uh, rejected the E-Pole book request in their county. I just read an article on it and the residents there wanted to retain paper. So it was just kind of an interesting article.
Yeah.
And I'm done.
Um, I've got a few things. Uh, I was asked to, uh, speak, uh, at the Lake T- Beltane. Annual meeting, which I plan to do, that's coming up in June tenth, I believe it is. And, uh, Long Lake Annual Meeting too, so I'll be attending those. Um, Heartland Lakes Development Commission received a little over twenty thousand dollars and some grant money through our. Northwoods Bank and Citizens Bank, uh, can't remember the name of the program with the state, but they. They put in X dollars and the state, uh, doubled or tripled, matched it, whatever program that was. Um, don't know if it was state or just, uh, private entities, but anyhow, it turned out to be a little over twenty thousand dollars, so that was a nice surprise. And that will help with the operating budget and other things. Um, and then, uh, Heritage, good news, I think I mentioned to you last time that, uh. Our ERC credit was approved while we received the money. Uh, that all came at once, which was kinda a surprise. Uh, we were supposed to get like eight hundred sixty thousand dollars and with interest, it ended up being like. One point one million dollars, so there will be a, uh, some reimbursement to the county a little bit. Um, so that'll be nice to see. I think we were talking maybe like four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars to the county. For the money that we've spent covering things for a while, so. In the end, we'll probably, based on the cash flow, might end up covering the portion of the loan at the end of the year anyhow again, so it's kinda. Tick for tack, but, but it's nice to have received it. Long, long need it and will definitely help shore up the, uh, the fund. As far as where we're at with Heritage since Tuesday, uh, Census, the manor's at twenty-four of twenty-six. The cottages are seventeen of eighteen and the Heritage Living Center keeps ticking up in Census, we're at forty-four now. And it appears it's going to kinda keep ticking up here for a while, which is good. Outside of the ERC credit, you know, just some standard repair items that have come up that have to be addressed, that we're addressing, so. Other than that, the EBITDA was good again in the month of April. Heritage Manor was a positive fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine, the cottages was a positive eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. Uh, the Living Center was a positive five thousand, three hundred and nineteen, so the total combined EBITDA was a positive eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-six. And I think that's, that's everything, yep.
Okay, so then tomorrow is the AMC District in Bemidji at eight AM. Kinda sounds like all of us are planning on attending.
There were suggested questions, where we're gonna have Jeff cover that, suggested topics to cover?
I don't recall.
Did you, you saw the email that Jeff?
I'll pull up the email. Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll respond to those.
Okay.
Questions and send it to you and you can comment or. But I'll, I'll do that this afternoon. You can comment, you can give the update, you can have me give the update however you wanna do it.
Okay.
Oh, you, do you remember when I asked Eric Bytemore about permits? So he actually sent an email, I'll just read it. I checked the year-to-date permits, compared them to last year, most everything is in one to two permits. Plus or minus of the night, or the twenty twenty-four numbers. The only marked difference was the E eleven, or nine eleven address requests are down forty percent compared to this point last year.
Um, the only other thing that comes to mind was, uh, the League of Women Voters as, uh, having a forum today, uh. Steve Simon's going to be there, the Secretary of State, it's from two to three PM today. I believe it's at the Northwoods Bank Community Room. So if anybody can attend that, um, just to ask questions or to gather more information. And I believe that is all.
I had a couple of questions on some of these, me, a couple of these meetings, um. One is the Department Head Meeting, um, my best date for doing that would be July. So I wonder if I can request July. If I, in June, now that'll conflict with, um, SWCD, I've worked it before. Where I went to this first and then SWCD, July, the, uh, Department Head Meeting is the fifth week of. So I can do, and, uh, SWCD is always the fourth, so I, that one I can actually do both. And in August I'll be gone, so. Whoever, I don't know who's gonna do June, but I, I ask if I can.
Cause I went last Tuesday.
I ask if I can do July.
Yeah, I can do June. I think it's my turn.
Twenty-fourth, is that correct?
Yep.
June twenty-fourth is the, and then July is when Tom.
I can probably do it.
Yeah, cause July is, I have SWCD twenty-second and then the following, meet the twenty-ninth. So that would, that would just fit perfectly for me for the two meetings.
Okay.
And my other one is, uh, I'll be gone on the, uh, uh, June twenty-fifth for the Board of Appeal. It's possible that I'll, I can be at a campground and I'll be attended virtually if it's, if that can be done.
It's a weird night, cause it's Wednesday. We usually do it Tuesday or Thursday. I, I double checked the date myself, cause I thought, this can't be right.
Yeah, oh, I can do Tuesday here.
There was a reason, um, I think Maria wasn't gonna be available.
Uh, there was a, there was actually staff people not available for personal reasons.
So Jeff, can that be done virtually?
We typically don't have a virtual option. We don't even, um, YouTube that meeting and the Truth and Taxation meeting.
The requests were down this year, I believe.
I, I, and you're gonna get an update from Marie, Maria before, um, before that, but, um, yeah, that's coming right up.
So I'll just have to be, miss it then.
Good.
So you want me to cover June twenty-fourth then? Is that, was that right?
Well, I hear June twenty-fourth.
That's Department Head. Ju- he's saying he wants July.
Yeah, Ju- uh, July.
For Department Head.
He can do Department Head too, so either you can decide.
I, I can do the June one.
Okay, good.
Okay, so I'll, I'll do July.
Okay.
You're, you're August then. And I'll pencil in September. Okay.
Okay, anything else that needs to get covered? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Shar moves. Shar moves, David seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.